Welcome. We running a couple of minutes behind. It's good to see everybody. I hadn't seen you in a year. I hope everybody had a good Christmas and New Years. Hope you had a great 2023, and I hope 24 is gonna be even better for you. And so we look forward to an even better year. So we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order before we do the compliance. I believe for consideration to have all of our council members here, we're going to make an adjustment on item number two. And Mr. Tetter, what's the best way for us to adjust that?
I think the simple thing is change the order of the agenda so that item number two becomes item number three. Item number four. For those two. Okay. Counselor?
We'll do that.
You have motion and not changing how adding to the.
We'll just switch. Okay. That'll allow Councilman Atkins to be here to participate too. Okay. All right. In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meetings and agendas were posted and furnished to all news media persons requesting notification. At this time, executive session, A, public body may hold a meeting closed to the public for one or more of the following reasons: Discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or lease of an employee, a student, or a person regulated by a public body or appointed to the person to a public body: Finance Department, Coroner's Office, and Treasurer's Office. Number two, discussion and negotiations incident to propose contract arrangements and proposed purchase or sale of property; the receipt of legal advice or the legal advice related to pending, threatened, or potential claim or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege; settlement of legal claims or the position of a public agency in other adversary situations involving the assertion against the agency of a claim. Tax map number 063-26-14-001, and also ending in 002. Gillisonville Pond Farmer Property Tax Map 050-00-04-043. Development Agreement Heather Rath Consulting Agreement Proposed Lease Purchase Agreement for Fire Apparatus. Cameron Headings versus Jasper County Davis versus Jasper County. Consideration of Conflict of Interest Waivers Burr Foreman Project Peaches and Project Install. Tax map number 067-00-01-010. Work Authorization Number 23 for Professional Services between Jasper County and Holt Consulting Company, LLC. Jasper County versus Alvin Atkins Lease Agreement 062-21-01-0001-J2. Five, discussion of matters related to the proposed location expansion or the provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by a public body. Prospect Update Project Showcase Project Peach and Project Veggies. At this time, we'll call for a motion to go into executive session, please.
So move that we go into executive session to discuss the items that has been read.
Now a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and at this time, we will go into executive session. This time, we'll call for a motion to come out of executive session.
I make a motion that we come out of executive session at this time.
I second it.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Do we have any actions as a result of executive session to discuss?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Clark?
Okay. I move to authorize the county to accept a grant from the Department of Commerce regarding the preparation of a feasibility study for the lengthening of the Regent Claudine Airport runway, provided any matching funds necessary to receive the grant in excess of 200, 500? About 200, 500?
2,500.
Yeah, 2,500 comes from sources other than Jasper County, including potential donation from private individuals of entitlements, and to authorize the county administrator to execute the grant and related document on behalf of the county.
Thank you. We have a motion, and we have a second.
So move.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Ms. Clark?
I move to authorize the county administrator to execute the conflict of interest waivers on behalf of Jasper County involving the law firm of Burr Foreman, who has provided and continued to provide legal advice from time to time to the county. And the law firm proposed representation of Project Install and Project Peaches, finding the terms of the letters provided sufficient safeguards to protect the county in those matters.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Mr. Kemp?
We don't have any.
No? Okay.
I took the Senate agenda, I'm on.
Thank you. At this time, what was originally labeled as item two, we'll turn over to our county administrator for election of officers.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, at this time, I'll open the floor for nominations for the position of chairman of county council.
Mr. Fieldrum, I nominate Marty Salls.
Have a mo- motion to close the nomination?
Yes, we close the motion on said name.
Okay. I'll go ahead and do a roll call vote then for Councilman Salls as chairman. Councilman Atkins?
Salls.
Vice Chairman Clark?
Salls.
Councilman Garbey? Are you for that?
Yeah.
Councilman Kemp?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, congratulations.
Thank you.
And it is, uh, it's my pleasure to turn the presiding officer duties right back to you for election of vice chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Fieldrum. I'd like to thank my fellow council members as well for that. And I take this job very seriously and appreciate your support. And hopefully that while 2023 was a great year, hopefully together, working together as a team with our staff, we can make 2024 even better. So thank you for that. It's an honor. At this time, I'll call for nominations for election of vice chair.
I nominate. Ms. Clark?
Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll have a motion to close the nomination on said name.
I make a motion that the nomination be closed on said name.
Well, and if you would, by raising your hand, we will call for votes for the election of Ms. Clark as our vice chairman. We'll start with Mr. Garbey. Thank you. And Mr. Kemp on the end. In favor? Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Clark. Alrighty. At this time, if you would, please join me for a pledge of allegiance and our invocation by Pastor Atkins.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For righteous and holy God, we come before you one more time on another day, one promised to us. Father God, we thank you for your presence and knowing the blood that run through our veins, allowing us to cultivate, Father God, to think, to move, to function. Father God, as we go into this meeting tonight, Father God, for what's best in this county, Father God, we ask you to allow each and every one, Father God, to govern themselves according, Father God. Amen. And all been said and done, Father God, as we leave this place and not your presence, we ask for traveling mercy to go back to our greatest home, even if it's northeast, west, or south in the direction we should go. We ask all your minute blessing in your son Jesus' name, and let everybody say amen.
Amen. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to our council meeting this evening. Thank you for taking time out of your busy lives to come join us and see what's going on in the county. It's a pleasure to have you. We have the mayor from Hardyville, Mayor Williams. Thank you for being with us. We have our sheriff. Thank you for being with us, Sheriff. And we appreciate all of y'all here today, and hopefully we can move through expeditiously. And we won't keep you here too long tonight, but we appreciate you being with us, so thank you. Okay, at this time, we have the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion that the agenda be approved.
Second.
Okay, well, discussion. We were going to move on the consent agenda.
Okay, I'll do it that way. You're out of it.
Yeah, consent agenda.
I'd like to change the consent agenda and take out 19 and 20.
And we will make those 15 A and B. Mr. Attorney, does that meet your approval? Good? Does that meet your approval?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm standing.
Okay. Okay, so at this time?
Approving the consent agenda is approving the items.
Right. And at this time, so we've got a motion. We have a second? Second? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we get on the consent agenda, and also now for the approval of the agenda. We need a motion for that.
I make a move, move to accept the agenda as written.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay. Getting down to business. Ms. Jackie O'Bannon, the Antioch Education Center. Welcome, Ms. O'Bannon. How are you?
Well, thank you.
Good, good. Good to see you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It is a pleasure to be here this evening before you. I am very, very proud to have been the first executive director of Antioch Educational Center. And as I prepare to lead the great state of South Carolina in Jasper County, it's an honor to stop by and just give you guys an update on Antioch. Okay, very briefly. We are now 14 years old, and we've been all over the place. Started in a storefront downtown, and then we went to the older high school, and now we are on Main Street. And we're adding additions, classrooms, and I'm very, very, very excited about that. We are partnering with the University of South Carolina School of Nursing. They pay us to train nursing assistants. And we've just been approved for patient care technician, EKG, and phlebotomy. And we're looking at taking a shed that we have on the back lot and turning it into electrical, teaching people how to be electricians. So we've come a long way since 2010, when we first came to Jasper County. And along the way, we made a lot of good friends. And I'm, before I go any further, I'm so proud to have some of the members of the board of directors. And if you will allow me, I would like to ask them to stand.
Absolutely. Thank you for your service.
This has been an honor to be here in Jasper in South Carolina. As you guys know, many of you know I'm a Washingtonian. And I fell in love with South Carolina, was supposed to be here two years, ended up staying 14. But it's time to go home now, so I'm very excited about that. And before we go home, we wanted to recognize, there's too many people to say thank you to, but there's one person in specific with the county and the town, and he's all over the place. And I often joke with him and call him my hero. I'm so proud to be just standing here this evening. And if I start talking about him, I get fooled because he's such a good guy. You know, he's one of those good guys. And I've grown to really respect and admire him. So I asked my colleague, boy person, to come and present on behalf of Antioch. If that's okay with you all, Ms. Verstappen.
Absolutely.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Antioch education center, we are presenting this here to this well-deserved young man. So could you all come up to Antioch education center? I had the pleasure of meeting this young man four years ago. But for the last three years, for the last three years, we worked very closely together. And we would call him, and he would say, uh, let me see whether I can get this done, or whether we can make it work. But he always come back with the perfect answer and the perfect really good. We really appreciate working with him, and anytime we call him, he's right there to help us. Not only that he's working with the Antioch Educational Center, he's working for Jasper County, but he helped Antioch, which we are a nonprofit education, nonprofit center. He's helping Jasper County get the things they need and helping their people. So I would like to present this to none other than Chief Russell Wells. Russell Wells, Director of Emergency Services and Fire Chief for Jasper County and the town of Britain-Saprenham. The strongest people make time to help others, even when they are struggling with their own problem. No hands on leadership and assisting a local nonprofit who worked directly with the course of Jasper County resident, the nearby resident. Presented on this date, the 16th day of January night, in this year of 2024. Thank you, Chief Wells. Chief Wells assists us in the toys. Chief Wells assists us in getting the toys out to the children, storing our toy. We usually get 100 bikes every year. Chief Wells right there making sure we're secured and making sure we have room to issue out our toys. And this year, we took on a project called the linen giveaway. Chief Wells and his guys went over to Savannah and brought, what, four loads of linen and stuff, and thus issue out from his area. Now, I got to see how it's worked, but when he called back, he had it all worked out. So we appreciate all he does for the people in Jasper County. Thus, give Chief Wells a round of applause.
Then I take this on behalf of the staff.
Okay.
From the emergency services, because they really do shoulder the weight of what we do. And so without them, I can't do this still. So.
Thank you, and your staff.
On behalf of our staff, we thank you for the opportunity to work with you and be part of you all. And make a difference in the community.
Yes, sir.
Ms. O'Bannon. Ms. Jackie.
Yes.
I'm sad to see you go.
It's been a good run. I've been here for two years. So I'd like to thank Dr. Breck.
I came for two years, sent up to Pinkland, Dr. Brezis brought me here in two thousand and ten. But hey, that's been a long two years.
Well, I know that there's gonna be a big void to fill, and I know that Antioch is, you know, sad you're leaving. We would like to know who y'all are gonna select to try to fill your shoes.
Okay.
And obviously, Antioch makes a huge difference on the lives in our community, such a huge resource, what y'all do to support, you know, the children as well as the adults here. You know, y'all are right across from the post office, and I've been able to witness the growth of that entire square there where y'all's facility is, and so I'm really sad to see you go, but you have really done some good things for our community, and should be, you should be receiving an award yourself.
Oh.
So, thank you.
Thank you, I've enjoyed it.
And best wishes on your future endeavors, and whatever your travels lead you, we will miss you.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Ted Moyd, Jasper County Neighbors United. Welcome, Mr. Moyd.
Hello, Happy New Year.
Everything's lovely.
How you doing?
How are you?
Miss you, where have you been? Yeah, the pastor looking for you.
Good evening, everyone, Chairman and Council. It's good to be before you all again. I'm Ted Moyd, I'm the President and CEO of Jasper County Neighbors United. We are the only affordable housing agency in the county of Jasper, so I'm here to bring you some details about what we are proposing to you tonight. We are in our twenty-fifth year of business. We started in nineteen ninety-nine, and so we're gonna celebrate our twenty-fifth anniversary this year. But the reason why I'm here for you tonight, more than, for more than twenty-five years, Jasper County Neighbors United and a small group of dedicated, determined people have worked with partners, agencies, and foundations to provide affordable housing and all the essential community service to Jasper County and the Low Country. And before I go any further, I have a couple of my board members with me tonight. I would like to recognize, I have Ms. Carolyn Gemmell, who is our secretary, and Pastor Bowers, who is our treasurer. Hey, let's give them a hand. Well, y'all know we've been working diligently, and this organization has brought millions of dollars to Jasper County and the affordable housing arena. Well, recently, we sold our property at Mercy Circle in Hardyville, and we had a windfall. And so, the Board of Directors directed me to invest our money so that we can borrow against it to build better communities. So what I'm bringing to you all tonight, this is our first proposal, and this is the model that we want to share with you all. If you look at it, we propose a mixed-use development at our current office on Main Street in Hardyville, thirty-seven Main Street. That's the old library, that's the old Hardyville library. We purchased that library in twenty twenty. And so, the Board of Directors directed me to do something with that property, because it was a prime property located downtown in the heart of Hardyville. So what we are proposing, we are gonna build a sixty-five-hundred-square-foot building. We're gonna have fourteen offices for rent on the lower level, and we're gonna have four townhomes up top. We're gonna have two bedrooms, two baths. We're gonna have two one-bedroom, one bath. We haven't come up with a price yet, because we come into y'all so that we can make it affordable and sell it to the residents of Jasper County, and maybe the people who live upstairs and purchase these homes could come downstairs and have employment with one of the agencies below. If you look in your packet, you can see it. We came before you all about two years ago, and we asked you all for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the stimulus money, when it was appropriated, and you said you would get back with us. Well, I'm pretty sure time has passed, and I'm sure things came up, and that money has been spent, or some of it has been spent, but I'm coming to you all because I also serve on the Advisory Committee for Jasper County for the upcoming reappraisal and the comp health, not the appraisal, the comprehensive plan. And so this is what we are proposing. We talked about community development at crossroads. This would be the perfect development at a crossroad in a community, where people can have offices or businesses in the community and live upstairs, and if there's enough land, we can build more units on the property. So, right now, we have hired an architect. He has delivered our plans, the ones you are looking at. We are in the process of hiring a civil engineer, and also acquiring the lot next door to make this deal work. If you can give us the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we'll take this whatever you can. Right now, the civil engineer is costing us fifty thousand, and the lot next door is seventy thousand. That's a hundred and twenty compared to seven hundred and fifty, although we would like to have more, because if we have more in the project, then we can make the housing more affordable, because right now, we plan to sell the one-bedrooms for two hundred and fifty thousand. Hardyville is a hot market, and it's moving very fast. We plan to sell the two bedrooms for anywhere from two seventy-five to three hundred thousand. We are no longer in the business, Jasper County Neighbors United, we are no longer in the business of rental property. We are in the business of home ownership. We want people to have homes. There's nowhere to live here, nothing that is affordable, and most people cannot afford a house with a lot. A house with a lot these days costs you anywhere from three hundred thousand plus. What we are proposing is this development with townhouses. With townhouses, no, they wouldn't have a big old lot where their family can run and play, but at least they'll have a front where they can garden, a back where they can do their picnic. So we are proposing that we are gonna be the townhomes guru now. Like I told you all, we have invested our money, and we're gonna borrow against it, but we just don't wanna use our money. We need county money, we need Hardyville money, we need Ridgeland money. We've been in business twenty-five years, and I don't think we've been in business and stayed in business for twenty-five years if we weren't doing something right. Everybody comes and go, but J.C. has been here with you all, and I thank you all for the partnership, because you all helped us purchase that property back in two thousand nine, and that was, gave us that windfall so that we can come now and we can give back to our community. So we thank you all, and I hope that y'all will take this into consideration. We'll take this whatever you give us, but we need something to get started. We are in the process, we have met with the city of Hardyville, they gave us all the preliminaries, and so once we hire the civil engineer, we go back, and then we go with our architect, and we select our builder, and we are ready to not build this, but we wanna replicate what we built on thirty-seven Main Street. We wanna build this in all the communities over Jasper County, because, like I said, people cannot afford a house with a lot. A lot of them can, but most people in Jasper right now can't afford it. So townhomes would be a good option for home ownership right now, and if you all have any land that you all are willing to give up, to work with us, we're willing to work with y'all and build these homes for these people. And the more we build, the cheaper they will be. Now, this is our first project, so you don't expect it to be cheap, because we don't know the intricacies of what we're gonna face when we get into it. So once we get through this project, we'll know exactly from this point on how to move forward. And the biggest impediment in Jasper County to home ownership is financial literacy and first-time home buyers. So we are ready to go back, if we can get some funding, to start first-time home buyers and financial literacy again, and help these people get their credit straight, so when these homes are built, that they'll be ready to move in, and they'll be able to afford and sustain and live in these homes. I am tired of seeing people die in an apartment. We owned the apartment complex since two thousand nine. We sold it in December, and between two thousand nine and twenty-three, so many people have perished an apartment with no one there but them when they died. So I think that if we can get this model up and running, I think it'll be a good thing for Jasper County, and I think it'll be a good thing for Hardyville and Ridgeland also. I thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Moyd, I can tell you, the reason you've been there for twenty-five years is because you've done a good job managing it, and I think our track record speaks for itself, supporting Jasper County Neighbors United. We know that's a major issue, we've always supported it, you've done a great job, we need to do more of it. I appreciate what you do, and you're bored, and everybody that's here volunteering. It takes a lot of effort, and we see that, and we applaud you for the job you're doing. It's a huge resource for our community. Anybody have any questions or comments?
No, just hopefully be able to help.
I think this is something the council needs to get together and discuss before we release any money for any more development.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we always do that.
Thank you, Mr. Moyd.
Mr. Moyd, just a question, Mr. Moyd.
Mr. Kemp.
Right here. Pastor Bowers, excuse me, Pastor Bowers, I'd like to speak to you. I have, I've got some information for you that you may be interested in. Thank you, sorry, I've been trying to get a hold of them.
Okay, next we...
Here goes our chairman, he's giving, Attorney Gerald Moe.
Thank you.
He's back there the whole time.
Yeah, he's been back there the whole time. Okay, next we have Ms. Kimberly Burgess, Consideration of Resolution R-2024-01, The Peddlers and Hockers License.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Members of council. So the, this is the, as you said, the Peddlers and Hockers Resolution, and it is an annual resolution. This year, it's slightly different in that there are no longer any business license codes for peddlers and hockers, peddlers and hockers separately. I thought so. So, what this resolution now states is that the license fee for peddlers and hockers will be equal to a fee double the base rate of their natural class for business license purposes, i.e., for example, a door-to-door vacuum sales would be taxed as sales, not peddling or hawking, and that is the biggest and most significant change to this resolution.
Any questions from council, Mr. Kemp?
Yes. One thing, is it true, the way I read this, that you have to buy a license, the peddler has to buy a license to buy a license? I mean, that's the way it reads.
I think that's a little bit, they have to buy it before they commence business, but it's not that they have to buy a license to buy a license.
Okay, and...
It's, yeah, it's a little...
Okay, just, the reason I'm asking that is, you know, we're having a lot of food trucks lately, and if you read the peddler, it seems to be part of the food truck situation. Is that true, are they considered peddlers? And if not, maybe we should look at distinguishing the difference.
I will try and explain the difference. Peddlers and hockers are generally itinerant, salespeople that come in, and again, that's why I use the old vacuum salesman. Actually, when we were discussing this on the County Attorney's List, sir, we found a really nice Andy of Mayberry clip from the fifties that shows the peddlers out there. A food truck, is my understanding, Lisa, has its own N I S C S, North American Industrial Classification System, so it would be listed in the main business license section, and it would be taxed, not taxed, licensed, on the basis of that rate when we looked at that. Peddlers generally don't have a fixed place of business, I say fixed place, a place where they operate out of from, a business, a business address to use for, they're more attuned to that, but if somebody comes in and is truly here for a week, here for a weekend, they could, they could fall into the peddler or hawker.
So what I'm saying is, they're not gonna double, food trucks don't get doubled.
Right, they'll only have to pay once.
Just wanna make sure.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I sold rainbow vacuum cleaners for a brief time in college, I don't know why y'all picking on them.
Just as a side, this whole...
They worked really well, by the way.
...because lighting rods.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions? Nope. All right, this time we'll call for a motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you, motion carries. Okay, Ms. Burgess, she's still up to bat with another resolution, R-2024-02, for the disposal of a sheriff's department van.
Yes, sir, this is a two thousand and four Honda Odyssey van. It was purchased through the Sheriff's Department Drug Fund. They would like to sell it and replace it, so when, when they do sell it, the money, which would normally go into the general fund, would actually go back into the Sheriff's Department Drug Fund.
Good. Any questions? This time we'll call for a motion.
I make a motion that it be accepted.
We have a second from Mr. Garbade. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. All right, thank you. Sheriff, you're doing a great job, keep up the good work, my friend.
Thank you.
Your chief deputy beside you, too. Okay. Next, we have item number twelve, Public Hearing in Consideration of Second Reading of Ordinance Zero-Dash-Twenty-Twenty-Four-Dash-Zero-One, An Ordinance Authorizing the Execution and Delivery of a Fee in Lieu Ad Valorem Taxes and Incentive Agreement Between Jasper County S.C. and Project Showcase to Provide for Payment of a Fee in Lieu of Taxes, Approving the Creation of a Multi-County Park with Hampton County S.C., Authorizing Certain Infrastructure Credits and Other Matters Related There To. And Ryan Romano, how are you, Mr. Romano? It's good to see you, thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Again, this is just second reading, public hearing, what we discussed in December, it's a hundred and forty jobs, fourteen million dollar investment in the Hardyville Commerce Park, and happy to answer any questions on it.
Any questions from any council members?
Yes.
Mr. Kemp?
Several, I guess. In the paperwork, you have one where the agreement is between Jasper, Hampton, is the third one, I guess, the three of them there?
It should be between Jasper and Hampton.
Hampton, to Showcase.
Yes.
How can, how can you have an agreement with Showcase, which is just a name?
So we use a codename until, at this time with public hearing, where we release the names, so the agenda packet you had at this point has the...
You've already released the names.
Sorry?
You've already released the name.
That's right.
So why wouldn't it be on the, on the agreement?
That agreement just designates the park, so we'll know how to refer back to where we located it, what the multi-county park is, so that's just the name of the multi-county
I don't understand how you can't have...
I don't understand how you can't have an agreement with nobody, with a name.
All parties that are signing, I think the name of the real party in this one is-
An Inga LLC?
Right. Why wouldn't that be the agreement?
They would be executing the documents. Generally, we change some things between that company formerly known as Project Showcase.
So we tie them two in the final reading.
So the next hearing will have the, the Shen, the Showcase will be our, or whatever the name is.
Yes, right.
And they're from New Jersey, correct?
Um, I don't, yeah, they are.
Got to watch those New Jersey people.
Mayor. He wasn't right in the corner.
He's not paying attention. Okay, thank you, Mr. Romano. At this time, we'll have a public hearing. We'll open the floor to the public. Anybody wishing to address council as it relates to this specific item, please do so at this time. Public hearing going twice, public hearing going three times. Public hearing is now closed and at this time, I'll call for a motion for approval of the second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance O-2024-01.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Romano. Next, we have David Teller, consideration of third reading of ordinance 0-2023-21, amending section 9-96. Section 3 is adopted by ordinance number 2022-39 to provide for the appointment of members to the Levy Fire Protection Board.
Mr. Chair, members of council, thank you. You will recall that some time ago, we began the process of absorbing the Levy Fire District into our, our county fire system. Part of that was negotiations of how to set up the board. Back then, we reached an agreement. That agreement initially required that of the three appointed members that would be appointed, county council, two of the three would be former members of the Levy Fire District Board. We had problems finding those that were able and willing to serve off the board. I believe Mr. Kemp made some entreaties to them. As a result of that, the board has determined that it would be acceptable that they just be members from the Levy Fire District Service area, which we have. And to show that acquiescence, they signed a letter agreeing that the document, the ordinance that you have meets with their approval. They had no objection to it. I would note that in just reading it a moment ago, because of the passage of time of getting this, the initial ordinance said that three members would have staggered terms and the first member's term would end on June 30th, 2023, which is six months ago. So my suggestion is that we amend the orders here, add a year to each of the dates of 23, 24, and 25, just because of the passage of time, which is a clerical typographical type matter. We've had the public hearings, we've got the retention letter, the administration's request that with that slight amendment to change, add a year to each of the terms that council approve the third reading.
Any questions?
Yeah, how do we, how do the people select it? How do they determine their terms?
Rock, paper, scissors, draw cards.
Oh, it's up to their board?
Yes.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance O-2, O-2022-38, excuse, yeah, no, excuse me, O-2023-21, to add a year to the-
These are the terms.
The terms.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Mr. Teller, you're up next. I'll let you have that one.
This ordinance concerns the multi-county park and fee agreement out at the Cypress Ridge Industrial Park, one of our main manufacturing facilities at our Tyco, has last year purchased property from the county, the spec building out there that is catty-corner from them, if you will, across from the main entranceway. They intend to expand their facilities out there, including purchasing of equipment. After we sold the property to them, there were some, I won't say structural changes, but subtle changes to the way the fee agreements and economic incentives from the Department of Commerce would work out. It's taken us a while to get them through that process. So what you have is the third reading. We had a public hearing, an additional public hearing last December on the changes of the documents over the past 11 months. You have the final version in front of you, which provides incentives for them to put a significant amount of additional money into that project out there. Their representative, Mr. Baybank, couldn't be here with us tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I also have the benefit of Mr. Romano, who, he's gone now, the work on these documents. I'll try and answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Mr. Teller? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Teller. At this time, we'll call for a motion for approval.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Oh, Ms. Lisa Wagner, you're, I know you're up next. I know you excited. Consideration of the first reading of an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of JC so as to transfer a property located at 951 Carolina Drive, bearing Jasper County tax map number 067-00-01-003 from the rural preservation district to the industrial development district on the Jasper County official zoning map.
Good evening, Chairman Salz and county council members. This agenda item is a staff-initiated request for a zoning map amendment to have a property designated as industrial development. The subject property is located at 951 Carolina Drive. The property consists of 172 acres and is currently zoned rural preservation. The cherry, the property is owned by Beaufort Jasper Watersure Authority and is known as their Cherry Point Reclamation Facility, where sewer is collected and treated in accordance with Article 6 of the Jasper County Zoning Ordinance. Collection of sewage is allowed in the rural preservation zone. The facility was originally constructed around, between 1997 and 1998, and it's considered a legal non-conforming use because the treatment of sewage is not allowed in the rural preservation zoning district. Beaufort Jasper Watersure Authority submitted a major site plan application to expand the Cherry Point Reclamation Facility in order to meet the growth demands and the projected development forecast within their service area. During the site plan review, staff realized the property was being used as a legal non-conforming use. In accordance with Article 9 of the Jasper County Zoning Ordinance, legal non-conformities or uses, structures, lots, or developed site improvements that do not conform to one or more provisions or requirements of the zoning ordinance but were lawfully established prior to the effective date of the current zoning ordinance or amendments thereto, or those approved by the planning commission through Article 9:3.7, number 2 of the zoning ordinance. This property will never be developed for any other purpose than a sewage collection and treatment facility with the exception of accessory uses that support the facility. Furthermore, the facility has been operating as an industrial use for 25 years. According to the 2018 Jasper County Comprehensive Plan, the future land use map identifies this area as an urban transition area, which are areas that are, have pockets of unincorporated Jasper County or they're partially or entirely surrounded by either the city of Hardyville or the town of Ridgeland. In many instances, these areas were already developed as the municipalities expanded their municipal boundaries through annexation. For areas that experience new development or redevelopment within the urban transition zones, consideration should be given to working with the adjacent municipality for annexation, the adjacent parcels or zoned industrial development, general commercial, rural preservation, and the municipal limits of Hardyville. Adjacent land uses are a mix of both industrial and commercial uses. To the north is a planned development district through the city of Hardyville, which includes a new residential subdivision. To the east is a commercial subdivision known as the Cherry Point Business Park, which contains a variety of general commercial uses. To the south are two concrete plants, a waste management facility, and undeveloped forested property. To the west is undeveloped forested property. The subject property is accessed by Carolina Drive and Jasper Station Road. Carolina Drive is a local road maintained by Jasper County. Jasper Station Road is a local road for that portion that's maintained by South Carolina DOT. The Comprehensive Plan, other than annexation, doesn't give us any other guidance. Based on the adjacent zoning and land use, the planning commission recommends approval of the industrial area.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner. Any questions from council? Hearing none. At this time, we'll call for a motion of approval, please.
I'd like to make a motion to pass the first reading of ordinance, where is it? Of ordinance of tax map 067-00-01-003.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have 15A, which is Mr. Danny Lucas, consideration of the request for proposals for Terminal South redevelopment for the Ridgeland Claudine Airport.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and distinguished members of the Jasper County Council. Back in July, if you will recall, we brought to you a redevelopment plan for the Terminal South area of the Ridgeland Claudine Airport. This whole thing got started based upon a complaint that was lodged with the Federal Aviation Administration under Title 14 of the Code of Federal Regulations, Part 16. It is an administrative process that gets to, let's just say, raise a question and ask for a solution to a complaint at a federally obligated airport, which we are. So to answer that, and the complaint was that a particular pilot was upset because he wanted to have hangar space for his aircraft and none was available at the time, and he noticed that there were numerous hangars at the airport that housed other non-aeronautical uses, antique cars, tractors, furniture, boats. And so we were asked to provide the answer to the question, in fact, does that sort of thing occur at your airport? And we answered in affirmative, yes. So then the compliance office asked for a remedy to the gentleman's original complaint. Then they went on to investigate some other things that were happening with the hangar situation, as well as some other complaints at the airport. So in July of 2023, we brought forward to you the Terminal South redevelopment plan and asked that we be allowed to issue requests for proposals so that interested parties could come in and provide a plan or a, well, to start the process of development to increase the stock of hangars at the Ridgeland Claudine Airport. Back in July, you advised us to give this over to the airport commission to have them take a look at it, and if they like what they saw or ask for anything different, then bring that back to you at an appropriate time. So the airport commission has approved the revised redevelopment plan. The revised redevelopment plan takes out any reference to the potential purchase of an adjacent one-acre parcel. So we have, we're offering five, five parcels or five lots for additional hangar construction at the airport. And so what you have before you now is the revised Terminal South redevelopment plan, which if you approve it, then we'll turn that into an actual request for proposals and then put that out on the street for any and all entities to respond accordingly.
Any questions from council?
Yes. In July of 17th, it didn't pass. We decided it shouldn't be done. I'm firmly against this right now. We need a business plan. We need something. This is, the airport's been here five years and we don't have a business plan, but we want to be in business. We've also stated that, should we be in business? Liability, problems and all that? All I'm saying is, let's get a business plan, let's get the basics out of the way rather than go out and try to find somebody to do what we can do in-house. We have to commit. The commitment is no more part-time manager, full-time manager. That shows our commitment. Right now, having a part-time manager means we don't have a commitment. We're maybe. Either we do it or we don't. Thank you.
Any other, Mr. Atkins? Ms. Clark?
I don't have a problem with it.
Mr. Garbade?
I'm in agreement with John.
Okay. All right. At this time, we'll call for a motion to approve the redevelopment.
So move. Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, raise your hand. Okay. That has happened. Next, we have-
I want to note that that shows a very bad precedent that we voted it down, now we voted it up. Thank you.
We also had a different seated council in 2017. Next, we have a request for technical advice and assistance for the Trust for Public Land and the Nature Conservancy. Mr. Andrew Fulham.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I've prepared a memo for you about the request for technical assistance. It's with the Trust for Public Land. I did that not thinking that we would have any guests here this evening. It's sort of self-explanatory. You have used services of the Trust for Public Land before. They prepared the 2021 Conservation Finance feasibility study for Jasper County. We have a number of conservation partners in our audience tonight, and I just think it'd be nice to recognize them and invite them to the podium so that they could better explain this to you exactly what we're requesting. They're providing some, some free services to us and continue to do so to help you with your moratorium and your referendum, future referendum questions, and we're very appreciative of that. We have Ms. Peggy Hanrahan. She's with the, she's the Southeast Conservation Finance Director for the Trust for Public Land. And also, in this venue, I can't help but say, she's also the former mayor of Gainesville, Florida. Ms. Kate Schaefer, director of land-
Got to be a Seminole fan, then, I bet.
Yeah, we got Ms. Kate Schaefer, who is a regular fixture here at our meetings with the Open Land Trust and Mr. Grant McClure from the Coastal Conservation League. At least Peggy, but anybody else who might like to come to the podium?
Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Salz, and congratulations to you and to Madam Vice Mayor Clark. What a great testament to your leadership that your colleagues unanimously endorsed continued leadership. My name is Peggy Hanrahan. I'm with Trust for Public Land. We're a national nonprofit organization. I only work in the southeast. I've been with Trust for Public Land for 19 years this month.
Wow.
And I really work almost entirely with city and county government. I do a lot of work in South Carolina. Last fall, we worked with City of Charleston, but I've also worked with Berkeley County. In fact, we're doing some of their planning with them now. I was in Moncks Corner this morning and we worked with Dorchester County multiple times and with Beaufort County multiple times. We always work with local people. Kate and Grant have been long-term partners, their organizations, but we really want this to be a Jasper County-driven process. As Mr. Fulham said, it is entirely funded through grant funds. We are not asking the county to put in any funds. And what we really want to do is figure out all of the ways that you can fund your land conservation priorities, your active park or trail priorities, whatever your outdoor recreation priorities, and any other capital priorities that you have. It is very common for Trust for Public Land to end up working on the county's other needs because you might package them together in a single funding vehicle. It might be a transportation sales tax with conservation funding in it. It might be a capital projects. It might be- It might be a bond or a series of bonds. At the end of the day, though, it's going to be driven by you. You are the elected leaders who need to ask your voters whether or not they want to do that. We have worked on 14 ballot measures in South Carolina. All 14 have passed. But it may not end up being the right solution for Jasper. We'll do public opinion polling and bring back the information after talking to several hundred Jasper County voters representative of your electorate, demographically, geographically, age, race, party affiliation, and everything else. And if they say, as we talk to them, that they don't think this is a good idea, we're going to tell you that. We don't want to lead you anywhere that you don't want to be. This is really just an update of the report we did. I think most of you were on county council, I think all but, but Councilman Garbade were here. So we're really just bringing the numbers up to date. We'll, if you're interested, complete this work and bring you back recommendations. See where it goes. 2024 will be a good year. Be the highest voter turnout, a lot of public interest. You have taken some bold actions already to try to protect what people love about this place. And so, as you know, there's a lot of conversation going on at the community level. And so, this is a great time to talk about whether there's a small amount of local money that can help bring down that private state and federal money to protect one of the most beautiful places, not just in South Carolina, but in the United States and the world. Are there questions I can answer?
Mr. Garbade, any questions? Ms. Clark?
No.
Pastor Atkins?
No. Of course, I do. Just one. Do you, one other, do you work with all counties or just?
We work really only with counties that want our help. We do, some of our grants, we, so the work here in Jasper is funded by really two main grant sources. One, I'm sure you're familiar with Donnelly because they do work throughout the Low Country, and they're supporting some of the other work that is really being led by Grant and Kate. But we're a small partner in that as well. And then the other big source is Doris Duke Charitable Fund. It's the Duke family. That's Duke Power and Duke University, the same group. And that's across the United States. I mean, we can use that funding in Montana or in Mississippi or here in Jasper County. It is a priority for both Nature Conservancy and Trust for Public Land. We co-administer that grant. And both of us have highly ranked Jasper because of the quality of your resources and the leadership that you all have shown to say, we want to protect what we can here in Jasper.
Do you have anything to do with Beaufort?
We have worked with Beaufort in the past. We did help with their green space tax back a couple of years ago. Beaufort has a decades-long history of doing voter-authorized funding, and I think has the highest number of measures that they've put before voters and that have passed in the past, and Trust for Public Land has helped with those. And we actually, actually, it's interesting, we used to have a staff member working a great deal with Beaufort County. He is now the head of the South Carolina Conservation Bank, Raleigh West. He's our last Trust for Public Land employee here in the Low Country.
Because most of that area that we need to preserve, Beaufort can help us with.
Yeah.
Because it's Beaufort very-
And that is the beauty of that green space tax, is that Beaufort can spend some of that in Jasper. And my own opinion is that it would be to their benefit and to yours to do that. But that is, of course, a conversation between you all and their elected leadership.
Yeah, but if you put some emphasis on it.
I'm guessing Kate would have more influence than I. They don't know me. But I think it's a good idea, Councilman Kemp. And I really think that it would benefit Beaufort as much as Jasper if they use some of their resources here in Jasper, for sure.
I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Kate, did you want to speak to that comment about trying to use Beaufort County's money?
We love that idea. I have to tell her that is already in motions.
Yeah. It is.
I'll give you a quick answer. It is already in motion, and I think that is one of the most important iterations when Beaufort passed, as Peggy said, has a long, has had a long history with the Rural and Critical Lands Program. And an important iteration with the green space sales tax penny is the ability to use those funds out of county because the old adage about everything flowing downstream is true. Properties in Jasper County link to Beaufort on a watershed basis. You all share roadways that border your counties. You share the need for people to, you know, be able to commute and emergency vehicles be able to travel safely. So those roadways and waterways are really important linkages, and working together on land protection priorities can help both from a water quality and a growth management perspective on those fronts. So, we are actively working in Beaufort and in Jasper Counties, as well as other places, are an active application, an active applicant to those programs to see priority lands protected, and I think you'll see a lot more of that in short order. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
Mr. Chairman, the action item required by the council is to agree to request technical assistance. I have a draft letter in your package if you would consider a motion to request the technical assistance and authorize the chairman to sign that letter, if that be appropriate.
At this time, we'll call for a motion of that effect, please.
So moved that this letter be accepted.
Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fulcham. Okay, at this time, we're down to public comment. And we have two, three people signed in. We have a three-minute limit per public speaking, and at this time, we'll start with, I believe it's Louis Singleton. Is that Louis or Louis?
Lovey.
Lovey. Oh, come on up, Lovey. Hey, you got to be a good guy to be called Lovey. How are you?
Just fine.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, council members. I'm, I'm, I'm here, I'm here. Well, I lost the words. On behalf of the Caesar Red property, and still trying to fight to get this road in. I got a letter, we sent a letter, a CSX, and they sent a letter back saying they would allow the county to put in the road, if the county would, you know, pay for the funding. So, that's kind of where, where we at, trying to figure.
Mr. Singleton, if you could get with our county administrator, he'll give you his contact information, and we can get the details of the CSX letter and what the county is allowed to do or not do. We can kind of start that conversation and see what, what possibilities there might be for us to work on that for you. Okay?
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you.
And Mr. Fulcham will get your information, Mr. Singleton, and we'll have those conversations. Thank you. Next, we have Ronnie, is it Robertson?
Yes, Ronnie Robertson.
Hey.
Good evening, everybody.
How are you?
I'm part of Gilmania. Also, we looking forward to getting that road in so we can start some revenue going in Jasper County. What's happening is we can't even get on the property, so we working on that. But I'm also here to talk about the Red Hill, where we have property there, but they not allow us to put our trailers back. I had a mobile home up there. Now they got some new ordinances out that only two mobile homes can sit there when you got about four separate tanks from existing properties there. So now I'm ready to put my home back on the property, and for some reason, they're not letting us put it on there. And I'm coming to you guys to understand why they stopping us.
Okay. Mr. Robertson, I'll tell you the same thing. We need to get your information to the county administrator, and let's start those conversations and see what the situation is, the status, and what possibilities there may be. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you kindly.
Because I do have the addresses where my property, where my trailer was at.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We, I have Ms. Alina Hamilton-Clark. Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I would like to, first of all, you are, Alina Hamilton-Clark, as you said. I would like to address one of the things that you all talked about in executive session, the Gillisonville Pond, which we all know is not a pond. But we're asking that you all please ask him for a topography map if this is to move forward, and will he be following the SCDMR guidelines? And that's all we want to know, and we ask that you all go change our zone.
Thank you, ma'am. Hey, Mr. Freddie, how are you? Got you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, moving right along. Okay, next, we have the administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, thank you. I have three items on there for you. The first was about Exit 3, just giving you, at the time of the writing, the latest that I knew about the lead group meetings and the schedule. I provided an agenda in there from that meeting. Do you want to report out of the 3.4 million you had in escrow you set to DOT? 987,000, that's been spent. We did receive a new schedule because we got a little off track, as you may recall, from the original procedural schedule about resolutions and ordinances and what the city was doing, what the county was doing. Please report, we got a new schedule just a few days ago, and we'll be distributing that to you. You have the Capital Plan Program Status Report from MBCon. Another item that has surfaced is Ms. Dobson Elliott was successful at requesting of the Transportation Committee some money to resurface the parking lot to this building, which we've been looking for for some time, so we hope to get that project together soon. Mr. John Fleming with the SCA has been so kind as to help us, you know, he's an engineer in writing the specs for that, to bid that out, so we're appreciative of both the CTC and the SCA in that effort. And then the final thing I had on here is for Ms. Burgess. And that was to provide a brief update on the fire apparatus funding scenarios to date. You recall that you've approved the purchase of fire apparatus, and she was researching with the financial advisor and others, the best financing method. I don't think she's at a point to recommend anything yet, but she can give you a little status update of where she is in that process.
Before you sit, could I have a question?
Yes, sir.
On your, on the letter from the state, SCDOT?
Yes.
About the $300 million?
Yes.
What does that mean?
It means that we sent a joint letter to DOT asking about being the LPA, which is the local project administrator for those projects, that we were suggesting or asking if DOT would be willing to serve in that capacity. And the letter is really a, no, thank you, we think that should be a local thing, and there's a certification process you go through to become the LPA. We have never been an LPA. We used Beaufort County, who was qualified as an LPA in the past, and that was on the early design work of Exit 3.
Okay, because in my travels around, I always thought that $300 million was a total of everything. It was broken up into different, different sections. So, one section, it wasn't total of $3 million, $300 million over 20 years or over 10 years, but it was little pockets that were, they were going to be piecemeal.
In my understanding, that's the totality of the Triangle project to include the widening of 278, so that's, that was the project that we were, just seeing if they'd be willing to do that, and DOT said no.
Okay, thank you. All right. And?
A brief update on the financing. We're still investigating different possibilities. The lease opportunities that we have have been revised because interest rates have decreased. And we are still looking at potentially bond issuance and/or some bans for the first year until the equipment starts, begins to be delivered, in which case we would have to make the first payment. So I anticipate that we will be back in February with a recommendation. As I said, we're just still looking at it, so that's it.
Thank you. And we've already, we need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Actually, Mr. Salz, I found a food beginning.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And at this time, we will move into council member comments. And Mr. Garbade, any comments? Ms. Clark?
Just glad to be back and hope everyone had a very, very prosperous year, and we are going to continue, and we're going to serve the citizens of Jasper County the best that we can. Sometimes it may seem like things are moving slow and we ain't doing nothing, but it ain't over yet till the fat lady sing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Pastor Atkins?
Yeah, I want to say something tonight, and I want just to go down into the minutes, what I got to say, and I want to say to the citizens of Jasper County. When I got elected, I didn't came in sitting down complaining and griping. I came in working. The first project I came, I got done was the crosswalk over 95. Many, it looked like a jungle, the weeds went up from one side to the next, the trees was hiding in the walk. The second thing I got done was the county courthouse. It was so black and filtered with black mildew. I had a company come in by getting rid of the fine ass lady and pressure wash it to make it look like brand new. The third thing was the library. Library, it looked like a woods. You didn't know it was a library. Trees was all over the top of it. Had a tree company come in, cut all the trees off the library, cut them back from the building. The weeds was hiding at the window. They got a red pavement walkway there. You couldn't even see the walkway for the weeds. Had a landscape company came in and cleaned that and made that beautify. The fourth thing I had done was the detention center in the sheriff office. Had looked like a woods. Had a landscape company came in there and beautified that to make it look like. People come up and say, where did the sheriff office at? Right down the road by two miles. Then went to the detective building. Had looked like a woods. Had a landscape company come in and clean that up. Then the IT building. Dead plants in the front, building dirty. Had a landscape company come in and pressure wash, brought dirty in. Took all the old plant, dead plants out. Then the government building. Had a dead big oak tree in the front. Probably about 75 years old, limb falling off, falling on people car. Was a law of lawsuit. Had a tree company come in and take that out. Had a big dead tree to the courthouse over there. Got rid of the fine ass lady. Had a tree company come in and take that out. Then we went down to Cypress Ridge, where the front entrance had looked so bad. Had a landscape company beautify that. Then left from that. Came in working now, because there ain't no money in county council, citizen of Jasper County. It's the power that you possess. It ain't no money. The first check you get is not enough to pay your light bill. The second one you get is not enough to pay your mortgage. Then I left from there, and I went to senior citizen at Robbinsville, had me to come down. They had carpet down in about 25 years. The carpet was so dirty and stank, tell you for smelling. Had a company came in, got three bids, took the lower bid. They came in on the weekend, removed the old carpet and put new carpet down. Then I was fighting to try to get these baseball fields done so the kids can have something to do because softball was, and kickball was a big thing in Jasper County. Then I was fighting to try to get a recreation building on the north end like the south end got. So people, I don't want y'all to think I've been sitting. Look at my record. I came in working. I retired from Jasper County. That's why I ran. I didn't run for the money because there was no money. When you talk about beautification, this is what you call beautification. When you come in, you want to upgrade your county because people are steady moving here at all time. But in the county, with my county council, my colleagues, them spent $370,092.84 to get me removed, when the citizen of this county put me in place. Like I done something wrong, and I was not at fault because the gentleman that I beat, if he felt like I was out of place, he would have protested, and I would have never had a chance to win. But I'mma still run. I'mma run in this special election, win or lose. June primary, right around the corner. This could have been put a stop to it. Spend all that taxpayers' money. We could have taken that money and had a recreation building put in. The state gave Hampton last year $7 million. We need something on the north end. We got $750,000 for a BMX bike track. We could have bought a piece of land and had it put on it so the kids can have something to utilize. have something to utilize. It's about record, it's not about complaining and griping. Another thing, I get tired of hearing about the airport. Let's go way back. The airport, that looked like a woods. The airport is beautiful. If we ain't gonna upgrade the airport, why we let that golf course build like multi-million dollar golf course? People not driving to play golf. We say we want the better this county, but look like we want to tear it down. We don't want the north end to grow. People are steady moving here. We can't stop that. I think some of the, all of us need to move out the way, because the young people gonna bring, if people coming. We look at people moving the pool up. We ain't got nothing to do here on the north end. It's our job. We should be working for the citizen. We need to work for the citizen. What are we doing? Look at my stat. I didn't came in sitting down. The farmer's market, it needed a lot of work done. In order to see what's going on, you got to get out and ride around and look. You got to see what's going on. The tragedy sitting, the finance lady sitting right there. I goes and I get the key, and I ride the county. I look. That's what you call beautification. I want to see, I want to see my county look better. When I ride the other county, and their county look good to compare us, it's time for upgrading this county. How can we say we for the citizen? What we have got done, just a thing that we need to look at. What have we done? Let's look at our stat. It's more than just sitting here. We got to ride and say, "Okay, we need to upgrade this. We need to upgrade this. We need to upgrade that." There's a lot of things that we can do. We not doing. I tried my best. When I retired with the county, I know what the county at need, and like I say, it wasn't no money. I live here too, up on the Red Hill. If you want to see how beautiful that airport is, come out there about 12 o'clock just to ride, just to catch some fresh air, and look and see how beautiful it is. It's beautiful. People flying in here in jets. They're not driving from Detroit, California. They flying in here. We got to quit grabbing and complaining, start, and start pushing forward. We got to get past the shadow of our eyebrow and look. We say we looking to the future, but look like we cutting the future. The growth is coming, and if we gonna sit up here, we need to, we need to make sure the growth grow. I love, I love beautification. My record talk for me. I got all these things done, and if you don't believe Pastor Agnew got them done, go and ask the people in those area, and they'll tell you. I got them done. But I just want to let the citizen of Jasper County know, Pastor Agnew ain't just been sitting around. When you beautify the landscape, and if everybody, if anybody think back, if they rode around, they didn't know exactly how the library had look. You didn't know it was a library. People have come in the county and said, "Where the library at?" Now, the library look like something, even if it's on renovation, but before it is, you didn't know it. People didn't know where the courthouse was. The courthouse was so filthy. Black mildew all over it, and when it got pressure washed, it looked like brand slap and new. That crosswalk was so messed up, till they had it on the front page after I had it done. I didn't come here wrecking. There's no money in county council. Some folks think we making big money. It's no money, people. It's pocket change, enough to put gas in your car, and then the gas taking that, and that's all I got to say. Mr. Chairman, thank you for that two minutes.
You're welcome. Thank you, Pastor Atkins. On Friday morning, Beaufort County Economic Development, I got you, has converged going on. I'm going to be presenting on behalf of the Southern Carolina Alliance on Friday morning. That'll be at Sun City as well, so I encourage everybody to attend or watch that. It'll be very informative. Myself, along with the chairman of Beaufort County Council and some other economic development leaders will be presenting on updates on what's going on in Beaufort County and the Low Country, so that will be very informative, and I encourage people to attend that as well. That's about all I have, and I recognize Mr. Kemp.
I just have, very short. This month is slavery and human trafficking month. We have a lot of problems in this county with human trafficking. On January 29th, 9:30, the task force will be, established by the 14th Circuit Solicitor, is going to be present, having a presentation down at the Hardyville Rec Center. How important it is, is JoJo Woodworth, Woodward, excuse me, JoJo Woodward is going to be the presenter. He is our sheriff. He's a sheriff in our department. They think so much of him that they're going to let him present. I hope that some people will show up and support him and support the month. Thank you.
What, what time is that?
9:30.
On the 29th?
29th.
That was short. That's a record for you. The year's only just begun. It's hard to follow a Baptist minister.
Okay, sir?
I'd like to say something.
Okay.
All this progress that Mr. Atkins is talking about, that's, that's really good. All the development he's talking about is really good, but it takes money. Jasper County needs money for a lot more than a bean shed down there, a farmer's market. They need money for other things besides that. Now, another thing he mentioned, and when he come into office, in 2020, that whole election was wrong. He was an ineligible candidate that run for position out of his own, and the county council passed and rezoned this a piece that covered where he lived so that he'd be eligible for, for the district that he was running in. And not only that, he voted on the county council to have it rezoned. That's like county man, the court letting him sit on the thing, on his jury. Everything about election in 2020 was wrong. The attorney general in South Carolina said it was wrong, and that's the reason on the 20th of February, they having a new election. That's where your new election's coming in, because the 2020 election was dead wrong. Everything about it was wrong, and the election commission and the Democratic Party didn't do one thing about it, nothing. And they knew that that man was ineligible when he came out. They knew it the day he signed up. They didn't do nothing about it.
I love you, Mr. Garbade.
I love you.
Okay.
I'm glad to do. I love you too. I ain't got nothing against you. I, I like right from wrong, and what was done was wrong, and you know it.
Do some work.
You can believe it was wrong.
All right. At this time, we'll call for a motion to adjourn. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. We have a second. All in favor, stand up, and y'all have a great night.